Come on. The leopard, stay back. Cover your mouth, don't breathe his air.
Don't come any closer.
It's okay, John, it's okay. Rabbi, Rabbi, you can't, his disease, you can't. Please. Please. Please don't turn away from me.
I won't.
Lord, if you are willing, you can make me green. Only if you want to, I submit to you. My sister, she was a servant at the wedding, she told me what you could do. I know you can heal me if you are willing.
I am willing. Be cleansed.
Thank you, thank you. I, I knew it, I knew it, I knew it. What can, what can I ever do?
Do not say anything to anyone.
You don't seek your own honor?
Please just do me this one thing.
But what would I tell people?
Go, show yourself to the priest. Let them inspect you and see that you are cleansed. Make the proper offering in the temple as Moses commanded. And go on your way. Why is an extra tunic? Just one of you, just one of you, that's enough. Green is definitely your color. Not too shabby.
Salome!
What?
They're coming!
Damn, be careful!
Hello?
James, John.
Yes. Emma.
Listen to him, please. Stay by his side.
I will, I will. It's a pleasure to meet you too, Salome. I'm Jesus of Nazareth.
Of course you are.
And hello again, Zebedee.
It's a morning.
Emma. Emma!
My mother! Please, come in!
Are you certain that there will be others joining us?
I insist, everyone, please! Come, come. Please.
Where are you going?
Please, we need to see Jesus.
There's no room up there.
He's paralyzed, and the waist down, he can't stand it.
No, there, there is definitely no room then.
Simon, he deserves to hear Jesus as much as anyone else.
I know again, I'm so glad I found you, my friend, dear heathen.
Why do you need to get closer?
I saw what your master did to the leopard. I know what I saw.
We're trying to keep them under wraps, for now. Look at this crowd, imagine what we'd be...
Please, please, make my friend to him.
With that company, I'll talk to them, I'll talk to them.
Come with me. Can't you get us any closer?
I don't want to interrupt the teacher by causing a scene.
What if you were me?
Wouldn't you want your friends to make a scene?
I was here once.
What about the roof?
Cannot be hid, and if it were nighttime, Zebedee wouldn't light his lamp and put it under a basket. Put it on a stand, or it could light us all.
Jesus of Nazareth! I saw what you did to the leopard on the road this morning. My friend has been paralyzed since Chalco. He has no hope but you. Please, do for him what you did for the leopard.
Put it back, man!
If you are willing, Rabbi, I know you can do this.
This is what you wanted? You had to have it at least.
You, by whose authority do you teach? Answer me!
If you are willing, Rabbi, you know you can.
I'm talking to you, by whom do you teach? Certainly not the authority of any rabbi from Nazareth. Where did you study?
Your faith is beautiful. Son, take heart. Your sins are forgiven. Who is this who speaks blasphemy? Who can forgive sins but God alone? Right? But I ask you, which is easier to say? Your sins are forgiven? Or rise up and walk? It's easy to say anything, no? But to show you. And so that you may know that the Son of Man has the authority on earth to forgive sins. I say to you, my son, rise. Pick up your bed and go home. Easy, darling. Thank you. Now go on.
Good morning, God bless you. Welcome to episode 6 of The Chosen Bible Study. It is so good to be with you again this Friday morning as we study God's Word together. I really love this episode 6 because it's about the great physician. It talks about the indescribable compassion of our Lord Jesus. You know, because of His compassion, we are able to be made new. Throughout the ages, one of the titles of God has been the great physician. All throughout the Old Testament and the New Testament. And I want to read to you especially from Isaiah 53. If you have your Bibles turned with me to Isaiah. And we're going to look at chapter 53. And it describes the Messiah, who would come. And let's begin reading together in verse 4. Surely, He has born our griefs and carried our sorrows, yet we esteemed Him stricken, smitten by God and afflicted; but He was wounded for our transgressions; He was bruised for our iniquities. The chastisement for our peace was upon Him, and by His stripes we are healed. I wanted to read to you also some Old Testament scriptures and then some New Testament scriptures that describe for us that God is our great physician. I'm sure a lot of you like me have been visiting the doctor a lot this year because of COVID and other health issues that we've had. We thank God for our doctors, that the Lord gives them the wisdom and the discernment and the ability to heal our bodies, to provide for our needs. But don't forget that God is the great physician. He knows us through and through. He knit us together in our mother's womb. He knows how many hairs are on our head or the lack of it. And so we, we know that God knows us, He knows our bodies. Let's look at some Old Testament scriptures together. The address will pop up on the screen for you if you would like to turn there with me. The first scripture from the Old Testament comes from the prophet Jeremiah. Jeremiah, chapter 30, verse 17. "For I will restore health to you, and your wounds I will heal," declares the Lord, "because they have called you an outcast. It is Zion for whom no one cares." And then let's turn back to Psalm 103. Let's read Psalm 103, verses 2 and 3. "Bless the Lord, O my soul, and forget not all His benefits: who forgives all your iniquity, who heals all your diseases." Now let's look at some New Testament scriptures together. Let's look at Luke 5, verse 31. "And Jesus answered them: Those who are well have no need of a physician; but those who are sick." And Matthew 9, verse 35. "And Jesus went throughout all the cities and villages, teaching in their synagogues and proclaiming the gospel of the kingdom, and healing every disease and every affliction." One chapter over in Matthew 8, Matthew 8, verses 16 and 17. "That evening they brought to him many who were oppressed by demons; and he cast out the spirits with a word, and he healed all who were sick." This was to fulfill what was spoken by the prophet Isaiah, that he took our illnesses and bore our diseases. And then let's read a few chapters more in the beginning of Matthew. Matthew 4, beginning in verse 23. "And he went throughout all Galilee, teaching in the synagogues, proclaiming the gospel of the kingdom; he healed every disease and every affliction among the people; so his fame spread throughout all of Syria; and they brought him all those who were sick, those who were afflicted with various diseases and pains, those who were oppressed by demons, epileptics, and paralytics; and he healed them all." Mark 5, verse 34. "Jesus said to her daughter, 'Your faith has made you well; go in peace and be healed of your disease.'" And one of my favorite portions of scripture from James, chapter 5, beginning in verse 14. "Is any among you sick? Let him call for the elders of the church; let them pray over him, anointing him with oil in the name of the Lord; and the prayer of faith will save the one who is sick, and the Lord will raise him up; and if he has committed sins, he will be forgiven.'" I love the scriptures that tell us that Jesus is the great Messiah, who shows great compassion, indescribable compassion for us. You know, the Son of Man is the great physician. Jesus is the greatest doctor who ever lived and walked this earth, and He dealt not only with our physical bodies, our physical pain and suffering, but Jesus went also to the root, the cause of all sicknesses and diseases. And that cause is sin. In our story today, we see in the episode 6 of The Chosen, Jesus had compassion on a man with leprosy. It was a disease that was so terrible. It not only caused the skin to rot and limbs to rot and fall off, but it would have been an awful life, full of suffering and loneliness, because lepers were outcast. They lived in colonies outside of the city. And whenever someone would get close to them, they would cry out, "Unclean, unclean!" But when the leper, in this story, from the gospel of Mark, we see a leopard that encounters Jesus. And then he comes up to Jesus, and the leper, he doesn't hide from the Lord. He doesn't cry out, "Unclean!" He looks at Jesus and he calls Jesus, "Lord." He had so much faith, he had so much faith in Jesus, and he calls him, "Lord, Lord, if you are willing." You know, he knew that Jesus could heal him. God, Jesus could cleanse him from all of his sin. What faith he had! He knew that Jesus wasn't just an ordinary teacher, an ordinary rabbi, because Jesus spoke and things happened. Jesus had full power and authority from His heavenly Father to heal, to restore, to raise the dead. It spoke of His divinity, that He is God in the flesh. He is the second person of the Trinity. And that leopard said, that leper said, "If you are willing..." You know, we're to pray God's will in all things, even when we are praying for healing of our physical sicknesses. Jesus was not only willing to heal, to cleanse this man, but the Lord and His compassion reached out, and He touched the man, He touched the leper. I hope that blesses your heart as much as it blesses mine, that Jesus is willing to touch the untouchables of this world. In His great love and in His concern and compassion, it shows that He has grace and mercy for others. You know, I have suffered much in my life. I won't go into all the details, but life was very difficult for me for many, many years. I found it difficult to forgive, to let go of the past. And I can remember when I saw the passion of the Christ, when I saw it for the first time, and Jesus was being whipped with many stripes upon his back. It was personal for me. When he was mocked, when he was beaten by the soldiers, and they pushed that crown of thorns upon his head. Jesus bore the wounds and the beatings for me, so that I could be healed, I could be cleansed and restored, so I could let go and trust God with my life, and so that I could learn to forgive as He forgave. You know, Jesus made me a new person, a new creation. I have a wonderfully abundant new life. And these symbols that Jesus endured, the whip and the crown, they were for the curse of pain and suffering that we all bear. And Jesus took them and He nailed them to the cross. Not only is Jesus the great physician of our bodies, He's the great physician of our souls. God our Father gave the Son of Man full authority to forgive our sins, to heal our bodies, to make us new. I want to read to you from Luke, chapter 5. Turn with me in your Bibles if you would, to Luke 5, beginning in verse 17. This miracle that we just saw in episode 6 would have happened right after Jesus reached out and cleansed the leopard. Beginning in Luke 5, verse 17. "Now it happens on a certain day, as He was teaching, that there were Pharisees and teachers of the law sitting by, who had come out of every town of Galilee, of Judea, and Jerusalem; and the power of the Lord was present to heal them. And then behold, men brought on a bed a man who was paralyzed, whom they sought to bring in and lay before him, before Jesus. And when they could not find a way to bring him in because of the crowd, they went up on the housetop and let down the paralytic with his bed through the tilling of the ceiling in the midst before Jesus. And when Jesus saw their faith, He said to them, 'Man, your sins are forgiven you.' And the scribes and the Pharisees began to reason and say, 'Who is this that speaks blasphemy? Who can forgive sins but God alone?'" And listen to verse 22. "But when Jesus perceived their thoughts, He answered, and He said to them, 'Why are you reasoning in your hearts? Which is easier, to say that your sins are forgiven you or to say, 'Rise up and walk'? But that you may know that the Son of Man has power on earth to forgive sins.' And He said to the man who was paralyzed, 'I say to you, arise, take up your bed, and go to your house.' And immediately he rose up before them; he took what he had been lying on, and he departed to his own house, glorifying God; and they were all amazed. And they glorified God, and then they were filled with fear, saying, 'We have seen strange things today.'" You know, right after this miracle is when Jesus calls Matthew, the tax collector. And you can't help but wonder if it really happened as the way episode 6 portrayed, that Matthew was there and he saw the healing and the forgiveness of sins of this paralytic who was there on his mat. You know, those Pharisees, they were so amazed. They were so amazed. You know, God made Jesus, who knew no sin, to be sin for us. He was nailed to the cross, he was whipped, and those stripes are what heal us. You know, we can become the righteousness of God. We are justified through the eyes of Jesus. That's good news, isn't it? That God can make all things new, that He can forgive our sins, that He is the great physician of our bodies and our souls. I don't know what you have endured in your life, what challenges you are facing with your health. Maybe you have some unforgiveness about something that happened to you in your, in your past, or perhaps you even have a stronghold, a sin that you just cannot seem to get control of. I want you to know that you have a great physician, and that He has, He has great and indescribable compassion for you and for your circumstances, just like He did for me. He cares, He wants to make all things possible. Don't give up. Have faith in God, hope in Christ. You know, Jesus is so faithful to us. He can't help it, because that's who He is. He is good all the time. And just like those Israelites we read about in the Old Testament, we need a Savior. We need a Savior to save us, to heal us, and to forgive our sins. That's why Jesus came to earth. In Daniel, chapter 7, Daniel the prophet gives a prophecy about Jesus in Daniel 7, beginning in verse 13. This is what Daniel saw. "In a vision at night I looked, and there before me was one like the Son of Man; he was coming in the clouds of heaven; and he approached the ancient of days, God our Father; and he was led into his presence; and there he was given authority, glory, and sovereign power. All nations and peoples of every language worshiped him; and his dominion is an everlasting dominion that will not pass away; and his kingdom is one that will never be destroyed." You know, that tonight, at dusk, tonight, Friday night at dusk, Passover begins. Passover begins in Israel. You know, Passover was when the Israelites would sacrifice a spotless lamb, and they would wipe its blood on the doorpost to escape death and destruction. But you know, that was only a temporary fix, wasn't it? It only lasted from year to year. They had to do it again and again. But I want you to know that Jesus, our great physician, is our spotless, sinless Lamb of God that takes away all the sins of the world. He is the one and the only sacrifice for our sins. And if we believe in Him, beloved, we can experience His grace, His blessings, His mercy, and His forgiveness in our lives. Jesus blesses us with every spiritual blessing. He gives us emotional, rational, physical... spiritual healing. It gives us wholeness and it reconciles us back to God. God is so faithful. He will finish what he has started for you and for me. Philippians one six says that we can be confident in this, that he who began a good work in you will carry it on to completion until the day of Christ Jesus, until we see the fulfillment of Daniel seven here on earth. I want to tell you this morning, trust in God. Have faith and hope that he has a wonderful plan for your life. He doesn't want us to be sick. He doesn't want us to suffer in our bodies and have sickness and pain in our souls. I want to close today with a question like I always do with our Bible studies. What changes has God made in your life? And what new things are you still hoping will come? Maybe you're praying for physical healing from a disease or an illness. Don't give up. Pray those scriptures that we read today from the Old and New Testament. Have faith and wait and trust in God. Maybe you're praying for God to help you with a stronghold, a sin that you know that God doesn't want you to have. It's not in line, in accordance with his Holy Word. Come to God. Ask God to cleanse you of that sin, to take away the desire, take away that stronghold. He can and he will. He did it for me, and I know that he will do it for you. Our prayer focus this morning as we close is, if you haven't received forgiveness for your sins, ask Jesus, ask God to come into your heart, to make you a new creation. Start living for him. Ask him to heal and restore you according to the promises in his Word. And if you are a believer, but you're struggling today with a sin or a sickness, or maybe even like me, you have some unforgiveness that you need to take care of. Jesus says, "Forgive us of our trespasses, as we forgive those who have trespassed, who have sinned against us." Jesus won't forgive you of your trespasses until you forgive those who have trespassed against you. Ask Jesus to increase your faith and your trust in him and in his will for your life. And then ask him to give you strength for the day. Strength to stay the course in this new path that he has put you and me on. Let us pray together in closing. Would you pray with me now? Heavenly Father, we feel your wonderful presence here with us, Lord, as we have studied your Holy Word, as we think about and ponder Episode Six of The Chosen. As you came up and encountered each person, Lord, that we read and study about and meditate on, you healed each one because of your indescribable compassion. And Lord, we believe, we have faith and hope that you can restore us. You can take away and cleanse us from our sins. Lord, that you can restore and renew our bodies, that you can give us new strength each and every day. Lord, we love you. We praise you. We plead the precious redeeming blood of Jesus on the doorpost of our heart and our souls. Lord, lead, guide, direct, and protect us each and every day. We look forward to your second coming. We wait for you, Lord. We know that you love us, that you would never leave us here alone. We don't have to fear. We can walk in great love and in great power and great authority because you are the Great Physician. We love you, Lord Jesus, and we pray these things in the name above every name, the name of Jesus Christ, our Lord, our sinless, spotless Lamb of God, who takes away the sins of the world. We love you, Lord, and it's in your name we pray. Amen and amen. May the love of God and the fellowship of Jesus Christ and the communion of the Holy Spirit be with you all until we can be together again. I hope you'll join us for worship in the sanctuary Sunday morning as we celebrate Palm Sunday, and that you'll come out to our church as we celebrate the Lord together and have a wonderful Easter egg hunt. It'll be a time of great fellowship and great spiritual blessings. I hope you'll join us. Well, be blessed. Remember, Jesus loves you and we love you. Amen.